Call the meeting to order, let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, March 16th. All members of council are present. Press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Item number one on the agenda is public comments. Kim Kerr, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and whatever you have to say. You have three minutes.
My name is Kim Kerr. I live at 3049 Riverbend Drive in Teguka, and I'm here representing the Teguka and Fort Mill Chamber of Commerce. I just came out to leave some registration forms and let everybody know that we're having the legislative breakfast here in Teguka at the Glennon Center on March 27th. We will have Congressman Mick Mulvaney present, as well as South Carolina Senator Wes Hayes. Senator Tim Scott has been invited, but we have not had confirmation yet. So I'll leave some flyers out. You can look at the website. The Teguka website actually has a link to the Chamber of Commerce. You can register there, or you can take one of these forms.
Perfect. Would you give those to city... What time was that again?
Seven thirty in the morning.
Seven thirty in the morning.
Breakfast, right early.
Aye, thank you. All right, we're all... Apparently, we're all being registered. So if you'd just give those to the city manager, he'll take care of it from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 17th. Counselor, any questions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number three on the agenda is special presentations, police department accommodation. I understand our police officer is unable to be here because he has walking pneumonia, so he'll come back when he's able to... I'm sorry?
We can wait till next month.
We'll wait till next month. Item number three B on the...
We don't need to table it, I mean, by motion or anything, do we?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Special presentation. Item number three on the agenda is the school board presentation.
This is like the Emmys or the Grammys, everybody gets up to... Who's gonna talk?
This is my posse. My name's Chuck Epps, Superintendent of Schools. I think I know most of you, if not all of you. You've had children in our schools, I hope. Very proud tonight to present our referendum committee, to keep our schools strong committee. We kept the same names, we keep the same website, we have so many of these things to pay that fee, but I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, but we're thrilled, thrilled to have citizens like these folks who are passionate about children, passionate about our challenge here with all the growth and the construction of new school sites, and we're proud that they've stepped to the plate. And they're from all parts of the district, and that was by design. So I'm gonna introduce Brian first, Brian Murphy, and you take it away.
Thank you. Mayor Shepard, members of the council, thank you very much for having us here tonight. The South Carolina Constitution requires everyone in the state to educate the state's children. Furthermore, students also have to attend. It could be public, it could be private, but all students are required to attend school. School districts where qualified students live, the school districts must enroll those children. There is no choice, and that has to be for free. Additionally, the local school board must provide for schoolhouses, teachers, and everything that goes along with educating our children. Kristi Spears is gonna talk a little bit about the population growth in our area and the impact on the schools.
Hi, I'm Kristi Spears, long-term resident of Teguka. So, yes, we have to provide schools, but in Fort Mill School District, we do more than what we have to, because Fort Mill School District exceeds expectations of any measurement, any scheme that you wanna look at. It is a top-ten school in the country, it's been voted the best school in the Charlotte area, all kinds of measurements that you can look at, and the one that really blows me away when I started researching some of this was the $18 million in scholarships just received last year for our graduating class. And I think that's sort of the evidence of the great education that our students are getting through the school district. It is a fundamental part of what makes the Fort Mill-Teguka area special, and it is a large component of what brings people to the area. I myself came here in 1978 because my father was transferred to the Charlotte area, and he heard about this place right across the border that had great schools, and then he learned about this wonderful little gated community down here that had a golf course, and thought that sounded pretty good. But things have changed in the area a little bit since then, and you guys are very familiar with the growth that's occurring, obviously, in the area. I do wanna show some charts that talk about growth across the district, because within the district, we've got Teguka, Fort Mill, and a lot of unincorporated areas of York County. So when you put it all together and you look at the growth, you see the trajectory has been and continues to be explosive over the next 10 years, and that has translated into, you know, a population that census says could grow as much as 80,000 to 85,000, 90,000 individuals across the district in the next 10 years. It's happening in all corners of all three areas, Teguka, Fort Mill, and unincorporated York County. You guys are obviously very familiar with all the Teguka areas, but if you see on the presentation, all the little circles, the reds, the blues, and the greens, those are new developments, and this is probably two to three months old, and I suspect there are more that we could add if we updated it today. But going from what's now 17,000-ish home sites that are served by the district school, projected to increase by 10,000 to 12,000 more homes to be served by the district in the next 10 years. And that has had a direct correlation to student growth. So in the last 10 years, the student population has doubled from 6,700 to about 13,000 this year, and the experts that the district has hired to extrapolate how many houses translate into how many students, and how many at which elementary, middle, and high school level would say that we're going to grow to about 20,000 by the year 2024.
What's the 6,700? What year?
10 years ago.
Okay.
2004.
Thank you.
To now, and to 10 years from now. This year alone, we're welcoming 683 was the latest number that I heard of new students to the district. So that is almost the equivalent of a whole new school's worth of population that is coming just from last year to this year. So Dr. Epps and the administration and the board have been studying this population growth over the last, well, over the last 10 years, but in the last year have come to the realization that it's time now to look at what we need to prepare for over the next 10 years. There was some information quoted in an article in the Fort Mill Times, I think it was $398 million worth of investment that would be required in the next 10 years. They enlisted the help of the four of us and some others to really do a task force and look at what should be recommended in terms of a bond referendum for this coming spring. That was presented to the school board on February 20th and ratified unanimously by the school board, and there will be a ballot question on May 5th that will proceed for a school board, I mean, a school bond. And Sharon is going to talk about some of the individual components that make up that referendum.
Hi, my name is Sharon Lewis, and I am a proud Teguka resident since 2002. I would like to talk to you about the different components of the bond. The first thing that I wanna point out to you, if you look at the growth chart that we have up for you, is that we are definitely growing, and if you look at the first red star, that is where we are in need of a new middle school, and that is in the year 2017, 2018. It does take 36 months to plan and build a middle school, so we have that included in the bond referendum. By the way, that site would be to the left of Pleasant Knoll Elementary. We already own that land. Also, if you continue to look at the growth chart, the next star that you see is the projected high school. We did have a bond in 2013, and that was to increase the size of the high schools, hoping that that would be enough to hold us for a little while. With all the growth, as you know, we're going to need a new high school sooner than we thought we would. So we're looking at a new high school in the year of 2019, 2020, and it takes 48 months to plan and build a new high school. We also have need of some technology upgrades. We wanna be able to upgrade all of the iPads and Chromebooks. What we have now, as you know, technology changes. Any of you have current phones? It changes every year. We do have to upgrade some of the Chromebooks and iPads that we currently have. We also wanted to... I'm sorry. We also have smartboards, and some of the earlier smartboards were put in, for example, at Gold Hill Elementary School. Those are very old at this point and are breaking down, so we need to upgrade those. We also want to be able to purchase land for future schools. The land that we have right now, we have land for the middle school, we have land for the high school, and we do have land down on Sutton Road that is a possibility for another elementary school. That is all the land that we have. We do wanna be able to purchase land for future growth. The land that we have that is out there currently is not very usable anymore, so we're looking at retaining walls and needing to be able to get that land as soon as we can. We are looking at building up a little bit, as you saw from Teguka Elementary School. We're looking at having possibly a three-story middle school. We also have included an aquatic center. Leroy Springs is going away within the next four years. We have very strong swim teams at our high schools. At the Fort Mill High School alone, we had six full scholarship athletes in the last year, so this is a very strong program. We wanna be able to provide for that program. We also used to do a water safety program back in the second graders. That program was eliminated with the recession, and we would like to be able to bring that back with an aquatic center. This is a bare-bones aquatic center. It includes two 25-muter pools. It would be locker rooms and just a couple of offices in that asylum. We are hoping that in the future, we might have somebody that may come forward and partner with us. If that happens, we do have something in this bond referendum written in that this money would not be sold for bond. We have a training and support center that we would like to build. As the school grows, we are gonna have need for more teachers. What this building, though, would be primarily used for would be secure warehousing. Right now, we do not have any secure warehousing for IT, so when we get shipments of iPads and Chromebooks, there is no safe place to put them. So that is a big thing for that, and we would like to be able to provide an area for ongoing training for teachers. This property would be next to where the district office is now, and we already do own that property. We do have renovations to existing schools. Fort Mill High School is under renovation right now, as was Nation Ford and is Nation Ford. We do need some additional money for those renovations. They are flipping the entrance of the high school, for any of you who have been out there. We do need additional money for that and to move Media Center. We also wanna take our middle school and elementary schools and make them all equitable. We are in need of buses desperately. The district has not had a new bus since 2008, so we would like to be able to provide additional money for some buses. And finally, the number that we came up with is 226.8 million. I know that sounds like an awful lot of money.
Of course it is.
What we did with this is we, when we all met, as Kristi mentioned, as a committee, we had several decisions to make. One of them is, should we come to you, or should we come to the voters, once a year for the next four years, and ask for money for a middle school, and then ask for money for a high school? Or should we do it all in one chunk and have one bond referendum that would hold us for the next four to five years? We chose to do it all in one piece and to put it in front of the voters all at one time. The tax impact that you're looking at there would be on the average assessed value of a $230,000 home, which is the average assessed value of a home in this area. That is not the actual market value, but the assessed value.
Sharon, can I add in, just reading some of the responses to the sizable ask, all of the debt does not have to be sold at the very beginning, and so that is, this is the maximum that would be sold. I think you've got five years to actually issue the debt, and so we do not expect, and none of our projections indicate that all 226 million would be sold at the very beginning. It will be sold over time as needed.
Also, on the tax fight issue, as more relevant, those 10 to 12,000 homes and these new Kingsley development kicks in, on the plus side, everybody will be paying into the pocket. So that number will go down, 276 per year, we just reluctant to say much about that. That's just what we know right now.
So before advocating for the bond, the committee needed to determine if there were any other solutions that would allow the district to continue its mission of educating the community's children without needing a referendum. And one of those is, the committee understands that the size of the bond is high, and some may say too high. However, the district looked out 10 years into the future, and it determined that its current facilities would not be able to properly educate the community's children. The bond referendum allows the Fort Mill School District to continue its tradition of excellent schools in the face of this expected growth for around $23 per month. The committee understands that excellent schools contribute to the quality of life that we all enjoy, and that a high quality of life supports high property values. Additionally, as the population grows, the number has to get larger. As more people come in, as there are more schools, the numbers, the budgets do get larger. The committee understands some people in the community would like the school district to control growth. However, South Carolina law mandates that the school district enrolls students who live in its district. The district has no legal authority to approve or disapprove of development. The district has discussed how growth impacts the district with Teguka, with Fort Mill, and with the county. And would, the district has requested that those costs be considered before approving those developments. Before advocating for the bond, the committee needed to determine whether or not it could raise impact fees. Under South Carolina law, impact fees for schools are banned. Fort Mill School District currently has a $2,500 per-home impact fee, and that's currently grandfathered in. The fee cannot be increased under South Carolina law. Additionally, the committee is concerned that any attempts to increase that fee could result in the fees being eliminated. The committee understands that some people in the community prefer that it frees enrollment such that any new children moving into the district would not be able to attend Fort Mill schools. However, South Carolina law requires the school district to enroll all qualified students. Therefore, the district cannot freeze enrollment district-wide. The committee understands that some do not think the district should build a pool complex. The district currently uses the Leroy Springs Recreation Complex, and that's scheduled to be demolished in just a few short years. The district's facilities plan include a pool to continue the programs it currently offers. And also, having a pool facility will allow the district to consider offering swim safety programs to its elementary schools. The district is currently actively seeking partners for this facility. The committee understands that some of the community don't feel that the district needs a training and support center. However, as the district adds teachers, schools, and employees, it also needs additional meeting space, additional office space, and warehousing space. Communication and training are essential to maintaining excellent schools. And our current district office was purchased out of bankruptcy, out of foreclosure, and while the district did get a good deal, it had, that facility didn't meet the entire The committee also understands that some of the community might feel unwilling to pay for new facilities that they will not use. However, adding additional schools allows the district to maintain low student-teacher ratios across the entire school system. That translates into better-performing schools. Additionally, every facility has equal instructional technology and recreational facilities. The committee also understands that some of the community might feel that the district should build bigger schools, two, three-story, very large high schools. However, current regulations limit the number of students on our campuses, and that's why we can't build much larger schools. To talk a little bit about some of the alternatives to a successful referendum, Kristi's gonna speak.
Well, I wish I had a lot of alternatives to propose, and the reality is that I don't. We looked at any other way to get around this when we've met over the last six months, and based on the charts that I put up earlier and the number of students that are coming to the district and that we project, the alternatives are really not very pleasant. The alternatives are mobile classrooms, higher teacher-student ratios, you know, potentially having to entertain crazy things like dual sessions at the high school level over time. And so, none of those really are pleasing alternatives, and so we felt like it was the right thing to do to move forward and say, with the growth that has been determined for this area, the schools need to respond and need to be prepared for those students. And that, at the moment, involves getting started pretty quickly with two additional schools that we talked about, and some other items, but those really are the two pressing needs because of the lag time on opening a new campus. And so, we feel passionately that it's the right way to go for the community, to keep the schools strong, to keep the level that we've all come to expect in our educational programs. We have spoken with the chambers, we've spoken actually with the town of Fort Mill as well, and we are asking, you know, across the board, we would like your support, we would like your endorsement of this because we think it's the right direction to go for the community. And with that, we're happy to take any questions you would have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just two quick questions. What is, roughly, is the current student-teacher ratio?
Excuse me, Chuck, can I ask you to do me a favor and come to the microphone?
At the K through 2 levels, around 21 to 1. 3 through 5, you go to 22, 23. In middle school, you should be, and we don't meet them all because of the growth, you should be around 26, 27, and a high school, anywhere from 27 to 29. But, like I say, we have overflows in areas, too.
And what, Brian, you mentioned that there are limits to the number of students that we can have on a particular campus when you were talking about vertical growth in the buildings. Can you just give me an idea, you know, what are the limits, you know, at a middle school, at a high school?
Not in any detail at this point. I know that there are certain regulations, as far as the state is gonna put in place, that's gonna limit the number of students. The additional consideration on building bigger schools is, all of our students benefit from being engaged on a personal level. That might be banned. For me, it's banned. For someone else, it might be football, and for someone else, it might be basketball. For someone, it might be chorus, or being in a play, being in a production, being involved in the arts. And as you get larger, you simply can't accommodate all those students. You wouldn't have the facilities, and you wouldn't have the classes. So in addition to those state regulations, the other practical considerations would be making sure that all of our students are engaged in their interest. I hope that answered your question.
Well, except that it raised one more question. You said, I asked you what were the numbers generally, and then you said you don't know what the law will impose or may impose, so it might understand that there isn't a law now, or you're just not familiar with it.
As far as where the law is, Dr. Epps, do you have that?
Yeah, I know that there are minimums and maximums that you can have per square feet, and then DOT kicks in, and, for example, we grew both high schools from 1,800 to 2,400. We had to do appropriate turning lanes. It wouldn't let us go more than 2,400, so all kind of measures kick in in addition to the academic side.
Okay, thank you.
Ron?
No. Good job.
Chris?
No, I mean, this isn't a brainstorming session, so I'm not gonna give you any great advice. You guys are doing a great job with the resources that you have right now, and we do have a great school system, so I appreciate your efforts to keep those standards up. I mean, there's obviously a million things we could all ask you about, changing the laws about how schools are built, maybe we can get three-story schools, and how long's that gonna take versus this, but I'm sure you all thought about that, so I appreciate all the time and effort you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Jen? I don't have any either. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Item number 4A on the agenda is the appointments to committees. The Planning Commission, there are four applications and three vacancies. Counsel, I believe we've passed our ballots down to Charlie?
They've already been counted.
Sylvia's got him?
No, he doesn't have ours.
Oh, 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 hold on a second, we got latecomers in.
Sorry, Ron.
Two hanging chairs.
Charlie told us to wait.
Tell me they're all in. Chris? Sergeant at arms.
Few hanging chairs there. 4B is also the Community Relations Committee. There are six applications for six vacancies. We'll wait for the tolling on those. I think I know how that's gonna work out. And then on item number 4C, which is the committee appointments for the Building Code Appeals, we have two applications for six vacancies. Again, I think I know how that's gonna turn out, but we'll see how that all works out. Stormwater Committee, we have two applications and seven vacancies. We'll wait for those when those are tallied. While we're doing that, we're gonna go on to item number 6A, sorry, 5A on the agenda, which is the reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition method. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is the second and final read of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition method. Plus or minus .76 acres located off of New Gray Rock Road, adjacent to Pod E in Lakewood. As council has already given favorable first read, we would ask for a favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance. Nope, I don't know if I'm in the right place. Hold on. Somebody else? No, 5A, I got it. Yep. Motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition method and incorporate within the corporate limits of the city of Teguka that area owned by Drake Gardendale LLC, approximately plus or minus .76 acres, tax map number 65400015, and to amend the Gardendale, also known as Lakewood PDD, to add the above parcel to Pod E to be designated as a single-family residential use.
I have a motion by Dottie Hirst. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Chris Landmark Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6A on the agenda, the new business is a resolution in opposition of House Bill Number 3490. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. More for probably the public's edification than anything, as council is aware. Representative Quinn has sponsored House Bill 3490, which would look to restrict business licenses and the amount that could be collected by local governments. This will most certainly have a negative effect for municipalities across the state. Our folks at the Municipal Association have been meeting with Representative Quinn, as well as members of the building community and business, and the State Chamber of Commerce. From what they're telling us, it has been very positive meetings, but they have pushed out a resolution and asked for each of the councils statewide in all the municipalities to consider adoption. We have that resolution before council tonight. Mayor, if you want, I can read it into the record.
That would be great.
Sure.
Save me from doing it.
Resolution in opposition of H. 3490, a House bill to cap business license fees. Whereas cities and towns in South Carolina provide critical services to residents, businesses, and visitors, whereas businesses locate in cities because of the core of commercial activity centered there, whereas the commercial activity is supported by city services, including police services, fire services, zoning, streetlights, sidewalks that can't be paid for on an individual usage basis. Whereas infrastructure and services to support commercial activity must be publicly funded if our cities are to maintain existing services and continue attracting private business investment and tourism to our cities, towns, and state. Whereas business license taxes account for 20% to 50% of city and town budgets that provide funding for the critical services businesses demand. Whereas H. 3490 is a House bill introduced on February 3rd that would cap business license taxes at $100 per business, whereas capping the business license tax is $100, is grossly unfair since very large businesses will pay the same amount as our small, local mom-and-pop stores. Whereas H. 3490 would be catastrophic for cities and towns in reducing funding for police, fire... for police, fire, garbage, and streetscaping and other services. Be it therefore resolved that the Council of the City of Tika K affirms on this day, March 16th, 2015, its opposition of H. 3490, a bill that cuts services to residents, businesses, and visitors. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Before I entertain a motion, there were 23 sponsors to this bill. And last week, when I was at the Association of South Carolina Mayors, I have to remember if I say that correctly, because if I say it a different way, it comes up as scam. Association of South Carolina Mayors Board, we discussed this, and there were 23 senators, House representatives who were supporting this bill, and so far, four of them have dropped off and not giving their support. And as of this afternoon, there were 73 cities who have sent this bill to their representation in regards to this, opposition to this bill. So, that's what I know about it so far. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of heated discussion. Representative Quinn did have conversations with the Municipal Association. They started out in the lobby of the Capitol Building, and they moved over to the Municipal Association Building, and it was about two and a half hours, which the Municipal Association was very surprised that he stayed that long because he usually is a little ADD on that kind of thing. He doesn't like to stay and be questioned. He, I believe, from the conversation that I had, that this will probably die. I know that in my conversations with Senator Hayes, he is not in favor of it. Ralph is also not in favor of it, Ralph Norman. So, I believe that this will probably die as it stands, but it will come back as something different, is my understanding.
Can I say something to that, Mayor?
Sure.
If you haven't spoken to our representatives, this came up while we were at York County Day. And Jennifer and I discussed it with a few people. And it was put to me, Act 388, now it was very costly to our school system, and ended up not being what the people that put it in thought it would be. And they said it would never pass. Ralph even said to me that day, he said, "It'll never pass." But it kept coming to the table, Act 388 did, as this is its seventh time up, I think.
Yes, sir.
And there's a lot of heat behind it, so we need to reach out. And we want to be business-friendly, and I think we are business-friendly. We just have to be careful that this, the way this is worded, is very costly to all the municipalities.
Anyone else? Counsel at this time, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of council, I motion to approve a resolution to oppose H. 3490, a House bill to cap business license fees.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hirsty. Any more council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Charlie, when we're done with this, you're going to send it to Representative Norman, Senator Hayes.
That's correct.
Would you also send it to the Municipal Association?
Most certainly.
They're collecting all of them. Thank you.
Senator Greg, Senator Gregory also.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Item number six B on the agenda is the introduction of a first reading of ordinance Number 77 amended. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm actually going to ask Tom Goble to come up to the podium, our Development Services Director, to help introduce this item. As he's getting prepared, just as a reminder, any change to our zoning ordinance does require a public hearing along with the two reads. We have had the public hearing. We've actually had two public hearings on this matter and received little to no input from the public. And have received, I think early on, we received some comments from council, which I believe were addressed. And again, the only sections that we're looking to amend are Sections 19-16, 19-137, and 19-167, which the red line versions of those were in y'all's packet as well as online. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk you through it.
Thank you, Charlie. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. In your packet are some recommended changes to Ordinance 77. More specifically, the signed regulations part of that ordinance. And as Charlie alluded to, we've had two public hearings on this. Staff met with the businesses out in Stonecrest about a year and a half ago to get their input. We approached them and said, "What can we do to help you be more successful?" And these are the ideas that they presented to us. We've incorporated them into the changes of 77. And they're saying if we loosen things up to this extent, that they can be more successful and do a better job of serving the public in what they do. So, tonight I ask a favorable review of a motion to approve the amendments to Ordinance 77, Sections 19-16, 19-137, and 19-167 as it's presented in your packet. Are there any questions about the changes?
Absolutely.
Can I get a motion first, Tom? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment to Ordinance 77, Sections 19-16, Section 19-137, and Section 19-167 as presented.
I have a motion by Chris Landmark Larson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hirsty. Ron?
Okay, on page 49, Tom, of 124, the red line, outside display of merchandise?
Yes, sir.
As you know, you lived here a long time, and I got crucified for the Walmart development over there. And that was one of the things we made national news with, that we would not allow outdoor display of anything. And the people know where the store is at. There are people that are surviving. I'm a former business person, it's made it times and times I didn't. But I cannot see, we've been crucified continually not to let that area turn into Cherry Road. By changing the sign ordinance, as it stated, and the outdoor display of merchandise, I think we're going to turn that over to the wrong direction. It's just my opinion. Outside table service, my understanding, I'd like to know when that changed. We allowed that, it was in our preliminary drawings of everything for that area. That's what the drawing was for the corner there where 521 BBQ's at and the other place.
What this addresses is?
All our sketches show that.
Right, yes, you're correct. And what this addresses is the cafe-style umbrellas over those tables. It allows up to 20% of the area of the umbrella to have advertising on it. Some of the vendors, the food and drink vendors, will provide umbrellas to the restaurants, and it might have an advertisement on it. And this would allow them to do that.
That part I don't have a problem with, because I think we're already overlooking that, as I can tell anyway. But here at the clubhouse and amongst other places. The outdoor display, what were the merchants' reasons? What do they mean by outdoor display?
It would be racks of clothes. Or it could be, in Walmart's case, it could be flowers to plant.
Could be lawnmowers, bicycles.
Possibly.
It could be just like the one in Rock Hill.
This is something that they said that would help their business.
It doesn't just apply to Walmart, though, the signage.
No, sir, no. This would be citywide.
Yeah, and I did talk to some of the businesses over there as well, and they, okay, everyone knows we're Walmart. And, you know, Ron, I agree with you on that. But there is a lot of stores that have indicated that they're not getting representation out there on the 160. So, I could sympathize with them. And obviously, this isn't a line item situation here, so we're either going to approve everything or none of it.
I'm sympathetic to those folks over there. But these ordinances were in place when they went in the store. They went there because the Walmart was there primarily. And they went there because it was a clean area, and it stayed clean. I just, I think we're, the beautiful city of Tika K is going to put its guard down if we change its sign ordinance, which we fought like hell not to have. And if we change the outdoor display, we're ruining what we sat here and voted on years ago.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I ask City Manager Fundenberg if he has anything to add to this?
Well, to clear up just a couple of things, I believe one of the things that brought this up was from Discount Tire. They can't have stacks of tires to roll out the morning of, "Hey, we're having a tire sale."
Like Firestone does just down the block.
Correct. If you're looking at this and hearing what Mr. Kirby says, as far as it looking like the Walmart and other areas, it does keep it to where it must be located on the sidewalk. It can't extend out so you're not going to have a parking lot that's full of lawnmowers down by the garden center or things of that nature. It does limit their space. It can infringe upon the storefront and other businesses and things of that nature. Yeah, as I recall the conversations after Mr. Goble and Ms. Britt met with the business owners for a few hours a while back, we didn't even pretend to give them everything that they requested. They requested a great deal more. And this is what staff worked on that we felt would give them a little, but still keep the, I guess, the spirit of Tika K without it going by the wayside. But again, this is coming from your business community, came to staff for council's consideration.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, back to the tire situation. When that came to the table and it came from planning, we were shocked that another tire store came to the area because we had so many. Their name says Discount Tire. They don't need tires on our sidewalk. I mean, they're a national company, they do very well. They sponsor, sponsor, they sponsor professional sports.
Just relay the information as it came to us.
I'm thankful they did.
I wonder, they're a great company.
Yeah, they're a good company.
Dottie?
I'm mostly okay. I mean, you're never going to please all of us. It's never going to be 100%, and we have talked about this a lot. And I had a few comments that I'm not going to bother with right now because it's just me telling you what my opinion is at this point, and we've been down that road. But I do have one question, and I'm just looking for it, but I can't find it right quick. Where it talks about non-conforming signs, and I don't know if that's a red line or not because I can't get there fast enough. You know, it talks about if somebody has a non-conforming sign that acts as a complete bar to signage for that establishment in one of these. It's capital letter H, but I don't know what section HD. I wrote it down, but I didn't put the page number. And we can look at it later, but if this reads the way I think it read, and it says that non-conforming signs act as a complete bar to signage for an establishment, if that, from my opinion, that statement is there, to me, that goes too far. I mean, if somebody makes a mistake in terms of the signage they put up, because this is a little bit complicated for me, I mean, to be honest, you know.
You're referring to D under H, non-conforming signs?
Yeah.
That's actually something that exists now.
I know it does, and I didn't think it was a red line, but I just noticed it. And so, I'd like to put that out there that there needs to be some wiggle room from my perspective. And maybe there is, it's just that if somebody makes a mistake, or somebody's repeatedly doing it, and they say, "We don't really care what the ordinance says," that's a whole different story.
I think potentially, yeah, obviously depending on how tonight or this vote goes, we do have another change forthcoming to 77. It's more around the zoning side of things in the next few months. So, at that point in time, we could look to see if there's a way to address that concern.
I mean, I'm guessing that in reality, we probably are addressing it reasonably, or we would. But again, that, to me, just was a little too far-fetched. And I did think I found a typo, a minor one, that wouldn't interfere with us doing what we're doing tonight, but I'll just share that with you later. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Jen?
I'm in favor of this. I spoke with Steve Cotton before he had to go back full-time to work because Big Apple Bagel was not doing well. And that was before I came on council, and he was completely in favor of these items. And who would have known how that could have changed his course of his business if these had come into fruition? So, if this is what we can help our business owners, I think we should do it. I do like the guidelines, the parameters that are put around them, so they just can't be at free will. I'm in complete favor of this.
I agree with Jen. I've spoken to several of the guy over at Discount Tire, wanting to know when he can put up a sign that he has a sale, like the guy down the street from him can do. Steve Cotton, I don't know if they're still in that business anymore. I think I saw a sign saying that the franchise was changing, was being sold. And maybe if we had done this a little quicker, he would have stayed a little longer. I think it's something that we should do. I think we need to do it. We need to support our businesses. We're out seeking more businesses to come to the city so that we can increase our revenue. And this kind of thing hinders, I believe, businesses coming to the city.
One more thing, Mayor, and I apologize. I understand where you folks are coming from, but also, looking, as you stated to me, Charlie, the other day, we have a minimal amount of space to work with, and it's at our hand right now in grooming what Tika K is going to be. So, we could hurt the opportunity for some other businesses that want to come in that are a little up end by opening this door. So, I think it's a mistake right now.
Any other council comments, call the question. All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Kirby opposes. Item number six C on the agenda is the introduction of the first reading of utility ordinance. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you a comprehensive utility ordinance for water and sewer. As we begin working very diligently on our management plan, which, as a quick update, SED hack did end up finding it today and notifying me of their apologies. But we realize that many of our, much of the way that we operate our water and sewer system, which is using best management practices, is being done by policy and procedure and not necessarily by ordinance. Pretty much, the majority of our utility ordinance is dealt more with establishing the utility and the master bond and series bonds related to them. This ordinance has been reviewed by our engineers, as well as our utility staff and myself. Resembles, very similar, Rock Hill, City of Clover, City of York, and things that they're doing. It does follow best management practices, and we would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading of a comprehensive water and sewer utility ordinance.
I have a motion by Dottie Hirsty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Landmark Larson. Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions regarding Article 1, Section 2. How is the connection in the service agreement handled with TCU customers?
That is something that we are actually going to begin working on here very shortly. Right now, none of our TCU customers have a service agreement slash contract with the city. And we're going to start taking those on section by section so that we don't all of a sudden have 1,754 people wanting to turn in their new service applications. Obviously, what TCWS had transferred with us in the purchase, so, I mean, we're fine in that regards. But it also gives us the opportunity to make sure we've got current contact information for each account. So, if we do have to do a reverse call-out for something, we can make sure that we've got up-to-date information and things like that on the accounts. We're going to start picking that up probably late spring and doing section by section, sending in the new forms, asking them to bring them back in to us, or, you know, drop it in a self-enclosed envelope that we'll provide to them and mail it back to us.
Okay, great. And regarding Article 2, Section 4A, regarding fast or slow meters, I understand if someone were to challenge and say that their meter was slow or fast, it's just come up to me quite a bit that people think that the rates are higher than they were before. And perhaps it is because the meters are actually being read now, like mine, that was buried in the dirt.
Correct.
But I noticed it said that if you felt like your meter was incorrect, it could be somehow...
Calibrated. Yeah, we can send it to a lab. What we do is we, our staff will take that meter out, go ahead and replace it with a brand-new meter. We'll send it to an independent lab. It's calibrated. It comes back within 5% accuracy. The owner, the customer, has to pay for the cost of the calibration test as well as what they were billed for. If it comes back outside of 5%, we're eating the cost, and then we're adjusting their bill. Nine times we've done multiple of those, both on TCU 1 and TCU 2. Thus far, we have not had any that have come back bad, where the customer asks us to calibrate.
Charlie, is there any fear that allowing that to happen, you know, is going to be, open up sort of a store? to be, open up sort of a storm, that, you know, everybody's going to, we're always wanting our bill lower, so we're all going to say it's the equipment? And then we got all these, you're replacing all these meters, and equipment's going for calibration, and this whole process.
We've already begun a meter replacement program on TCUD 2, similar to what we have on TCUD 1. What we're doing on TCUD 1 is because of, it's just normal maintenance, you know, once the meters are in the ground for, you know, 12 years, it's reached what industry says it's useful life. Doesn't mean the meter's bad. Typically, what we find are, as a meter gets older, it slows down. It doesn't necessarily speed up. When a customer wants us to test it, it's because they think their bill is too high, which means the meter would have sped up.
Right.
Typically, meters don't just get faster. The longer they're in the ground, they're, I mean, they're like humans. We get slower as we get older.
Speak for yourself.
So the other good thing is with the, as we're changing out to the meters like we use on TCUD 1, one of our staff members can pull right up and pull up their account, and it will show the history of the usage right down to the hour. This is how many gallons you were using at this time on this day. And more times than not, when we sit down with a customer and can show them that usage history, they realize, "Oh, yeah, I had my in-laws in town that weekend." Yeah, or, "Oh, yeah, I was pressure washing my driveway that weekend. I forgot about that." There's their water, their extra water usage. And then we have some that just flat-out say, "There's no way I use that much water." Okay, we'll test them, we'll have the meter tested. And nine times out of 10, it comes back, usually between 2% and 3% accurate. So do we have some slow meters on TCUD 2? Absolutely, and we are, we are battling that issue daily, trying to address that problem. We have found that there are a number of meters that TCWS just was not reading, where our staff has spent two and three hours trying to find the meter, and then they finally found it under a back porch or buried under, you know, six inches of soil that hadn't been touched in years.
Were they just doing historic, history readings?
Just guessing.
Typically, what, typically what would happen is they, and we use this method if we're, if we have to adjust a bill, is we use the DHEC average, which is 290 gallons per day per house, is what the SED HEC average is for water usage. If we don't have a annual history, a 12-month history with a customer, we'll go to that average, but if we do have a 12-month, then we'll look at what their 12-month average is and adjust in that fashion. But we take it on a case-by-case basis and do what makes the most sense and work with the customer on it.
For the obstructed meters, are they warned? It doesn't say that they are, but the fines are pretty hefty.
Yeah. What we've been running to primarily on TCUD 2, people parking over top of them and then refusing to move their vehicles. We've had to call the cops on, the police on a couple of occasions where people have threatened our meter readers, told them to get out of the yard, or, "I'm turning my dog out." Yeah, so it's been a lot of fun. It really has.
Ron?
I noticed a meter reader yesterday using one of our golf carts.
I did, too.
Yeah. One of our?
Yeah, one of our golf carts, not one of our maintenance carts, one of our new, brand-new golf carts, almond color, with a sign on the back that said, "Meter Reader."
I've talked to Josh about that. Those, the people that are doing the handheld meter reads are not city employees. We've contracted with a company that's doing that, so how they would have gotten access to a golf cart's behind me, but I'll check into it.
Please do, because we bought extra vehicles for that department.
Those, those people are required to use their own vehicles. They are not city staff.
That's why I'm saying that. We don't need, we don't need that to happen. It's awful nice piece of equipment.
Any other questions? Call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6D on the agenda is the introduction of a first reading ordinance number 426 amended. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is our solid waste ordinance, 426. As we were doing updates to the, to the website, our operations director, Tim Gillette, took the opportunity to look through this ordinance, specifically in regards to curbside collection. And there were a couple of changes, just updating the ordinance. For instance, when we first passed this ordinance, cities, if you had an old television or something like that, you could throw it out at the curb for collection by city staff. Federal regulations will not allow us to do that anymore. So your electronics and things of that nature, stereos, computers, televisions, things like that, they've got to be taken down to the convenience center of York County to be properly disposed of. It doesn't make sense for city staff to pick those up because then we have to take it all the way out to the York County landfill, which is about a 45 to 50-minute trip, because the convenience center won't allow us in there as far as city disposal and things of that nature. So most of what you see that were changed in here, again, is just some, some updates just to bring it current, and we would ask for council's favorable consideration this evening on this.
Thank you, Charlie. Ron, do you want to make a motion?
I want to ask a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to Ordinance 426.
Second for discussion.
Second by Ron Kirby for discussion.
Yeah, when did this become a federal law? I'm just curious. Never heard such a thing.
It's, it's been a regulation probably the last two, three years.
You got any, just curious what's, what the reason is?
It all has to do with electronic disposals and the copper in it and things of that nature.
That's right, okay.
They didn't want it in, yeah. Probably had, came out about the same time that they stopped making the lead-brass meters. You can't have lead in the ground anymore and things of that nature.
Okay, just curious.
It's taking all the fun out of it. Any other questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Questions or comments? Call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6E on the agenda is the approval of a letter of credit. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you LOC and performance labor and materials charity agreement for Cameron Creek Phase 1 for the amount of $308,514.56. We do have a minor modification that needs to be worked through on the LOC, and with Mr. McCleaves just coming back into town last week, he has put together the, the agreement, the performance agreement. So if council is so inclined, we would ask that this motion be contingent upon the city attorney's review and approval for both the LOC as well as the performance agreement. And then we should be able to move along with, with the folks from MI Homes so that everything will be in the same standard and form that you're used to seeing out of your LOCs and performance agreements.
Okay.
Is it okay that we make this motion saying contingent upon the city, city attorney's review? We don't have to list all of the things? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to approve the letter of credit in the amount of $308,514.56 contingent upon the city attorney's review and approval of the performance labor and material...